Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March 26th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Let the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Certainly. Fish fine?
Here.
Well, thank you. Laughin?
Here.
Luterno?
Here.
Maron?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shertel?
Here.
Testa?
Zandry.
Chairman Savoni?
Here. Councilor Zandry did advise me of a work obligation. Onto item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through J.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Heim, 342 South Elm Street. I just had a question. You know, I came to the meeting because there's a number of important issues that are being discussed here tonight that I was interested in. And, you know, these, there's a lot of information here, and a lot of documents that I, as a resident, only obtained when I got here this morning. Is there any reason why this stuff can't be scanned in and put online as as part of, you know, with the agenda for the meeting? So that somebody who is interested can have the information in the language beforehand?
So the documents are typically all scanned for the benefit of the council. I can see if, I mean, typically I don't have direct access to the website, but I can find out if there's a way for or... Madam Clerk, the wave.
Sorry. We do have a list of people we send agendas to every time there's a council meeting, and certain people get just the agenda, and other people get the entire package. So there are like numerous folks that are sitting here today that got the entire package, so they did get all the backup.
Okay.
So if you want, you could ask for that.
Okay. Well, I will make that request now. But I do think that there's an easier way to do that, which is to scan it in. And anybody that wants it, it's there for the taking, as opposed to having to make a special request to you or to somebody else to get the information, and then have you have to email, or whoever does it, email it to a select group of people. That just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Especially in this day and age. Scan it in, put it online, make it available to everybody. So that would be my suggestion, and I will follow up with you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Morganstein.
Good evening. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Through the chair to the mayor, please. Mr. Mayor, recently there was an article that came out about Rescue 3 going offline for about six weeks. Could you speak to that a little bit? What happened? The decision-making process? The chief came to you?
I don't believe it was six weeks. I think it was four weeks, but the department was running short on funds. The chief indicated to me that he intended to restrict the use of the rescue vehicle. He felt that we were able to respond in an appropriate manner to calls, and that's what happened.
So did he not make a request for funding to staff and have that operational?
There was no formal request for additional funds. I was never aware of exactly how much money. He did say that it runs entirely on overtime, and that certainly is a concern, because you never know, especially at this time of the year with, well, it's a little over half of the year, but overtime is budgeted for an entire year's needs, and if we were at the point that we were running out of overtime, that's a concern. He recognized that and didn't feel it would jeopardize public safety.
No, could you speak to why that vehicle takes so much overtime? It's not always overtime to staff that vehicle, is it?
From what I was told, that it does utilize overtime on a consistent basis.
But not all the time?
As far as I know, it's all the time.
And is that because we don't have enough staff to man it properly without making it overtime?
It gets into a lot of the details of the running of the department that I'm not comfortable in discussing. I only know what was requested in the budget, and the indication was there were not sufficient funds to continue to operate as they had been.
So you have no idea what the total would have been if he had requested it?
I did not discuss any dollar figures, no.
And in terms of staffing for the fire department, are we down positions right now?
Pardon? I didn't hear your question.
Are we down in staffing right now with positions?
I believe that we have firefighters out perhaps on workers' comp injuries, but as far as I know, the department is fully staffed, but not everyone is available to provide service.
And do you think at this point, without that vehicle being available, and with people having to be overtime to man it, that we're maybe straining our resources, and by not having it, we are increasing risk, not only to our firefighters, but to our public?
As far as I know, we are not in any way jeopardizing the public safety.
It seems that something that's necessary or utilized 11 months of the year seems like a necessary and something that's utilized to mitigate risk, and losing that seems to increase risk, and then if you have staffing that requires overtime all the time, that kind of indicates that we might be stressing our department to the point where maybe that is why there's people out, and there's leaves and injuries. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there being none, I close the public question and answer period and move on to the public hearing, the first of several. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $625,000 appropriation and bond authorization for the community pool park design. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance, incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. The ordinance appropriating $625,000 for community pool park design services and authorizing the issue of $625,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Are there comments from the public? Actually, if we could have Park and Rec staff come forward, and we do have the chairman of the Park Commission.
Mr. Gross. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Two questions. First question is, is Attorney Fozzie here for the $600,000? Is that why he's sitting in the audience?
Yes, he is.
Well, my only question is, at $600,000, are we... He's been here for many of the bonding issues. You just came off a question of truck number three being down because of short money, yet I assume he's getting paid to sit here. I just think these are little things that the council, the mayor, nothing against the attorney, but for $600,000, we're going to pay for it, or it's already been bonded in something. What kind of questions are really going to come up that we have one, two, three, I don't know, four attorneys sitting here? You've been through the process how many times over the years? Any question on the $600,000 bonding should be able to be answered by somebody in the room. That's just my opinion on that.
On, I understand that.
Okay. Second is, after you discuss with Park and Recs, will the, I mean, I know you're out to the audience now that can ask questions, but after you have a discussion, if there is any discussion up there, will the public be allowed to ask anything if you bring up any questions that pique the public's interest?
Typically not. That's
That's what I
process that we've adopted for holding a public hearing.
All right, I'll yield in case somebody else wants. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions or comments from the public? Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Heim, 342 South Elm Street. I've taken a look at the plan. I like the plan. I like the fact that there's been more added to the plan other than just the pool. You've included some volleyball courts and some concession stands, and I think a lot of that is important, because I think to some extent you want to make this as a destination place. One of the questions that I had, though, was had has the commission taken a look or considered if this is built, whether there's going to be any changes to make this facility more accessible, meaning that the season is extended, or that the way to purchase passes is changed and made easier, whether day passes are going to be offered, and the ability to purchase a pass at the facility. Have you guys gone so far as to have any of those discussions?
So before you guys answer, for the benefit of the record, I'm just going to ask all three of you to identify yourselves, and then you can decide who fields the question.
Sure. Good evening. John Gollak, Director of Park and Recreation.
Mike Savinelli, Pool Chairman and Member of the Commission.
Hal Cheat, Member of the Building Committee.
Thank you.
So there's been a lot of discussions. We have talked about the pass management system. We still have to go a long way with that. As far as the pool operating schedule, that's a budget issue that we'd have to consider. As far as the overall plan and what we're looking to do as far as making a destination and having this piece of property open more than a two and a half months than it is already with the splash park and the other park-like amenities, where the park can be open probably as soon as March and go all the way to October if it's weather permitting.
Okay, okay. And what about like how people are going to go about purchasing passes and that sort of thing? I mean, I think one of the issues has been that do you have to go to Park and Rec Department? Do you have to plan your weekend before the weekend actually gets there? And so if somebody wants to go there spontaneously on a Saturday or Sunday during the summer, they're prevented from doing that presently. Is that something that you guys have also discussed as to how people are going to go about purchasing passes?
Yes, we've had discussions about it.
And the reason why I ask that is because I think that goes hand in hand with the plan itself. We want to make this successful, and if that is not taken into consideration, then you may find some interest in the pool and some excitement about the pool for the first couple of years, and then you're going to end up in the same position where you're going to be, you're going to see a drop-off, because people aren't going to plan their weekends around going to the pool, and it's difficult to purchase passes. That's my concern about this. I'm certainly all in favor of doing this, but I hope that that's part of the plan, and it sounds like it is. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's being thoroughly examined.
Thank you.
Mr. Gross, I thought I saw somebody leaning forward. Would you mind yielding if there's somebody new and unusual who would like to comment? If you could, when you get to the microphone, if you could tell us your name and address for the record.
Allee Harvilla, 197 Cheshire Road, Wellingford, Connecticut, obviously. My comment, backing up Mr. Heim, unbelievably how many people I've liked to get passes for, but unfortunately Parks and Rec was closed, so it was not possible. Also, as a previous educator in Colorado, and then also now here certified in Connecticut, searching for a job, I cannot tell you how incredibly wonderful it would be to get kids away from screens and out and being active, and that would promote their health, that would be decreased obesity. It would just be a wonderful thing. So, just coming up for me.
Thank you. Sure. Mr., is it Mr. Stancuna?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone. My name is Darryl Stancuna, 18 Old Village Circle. My concerns, questions about the pool with the $625,000 bond. Is there any part of it where we can do like an announcement of job opportunities, part-time for the local high school students, maybe some kind of, you know, pre-notice, that way they can apply for summer jobs?
So just to clarify, this is just the design phase of the new pool. This would be the in-depth architectural drawings and engineering standards and all of that stuff. So we're not there yet where we've replaced the old park with the new park. This is the step in between.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Gross, thanks for your patience.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Got a couple chuckles. Question. Onto the panel here from Park and Rec. I saw on the paper that the bid was the $600,000 one. Is, what is that for? Is that just for the design, or?
Yeah, the scope of the $625,000 actually covers a number of different things. It does
You don't have to face me because they can't hear you.
Sorry, first time. It does cover the complete design, which takes, which involves several stages of work initially, conceptually, schematically, the various permitting processes that the designers need to go through, both of the town and Wetlands, P and Z, especially the State Department of Public Health to get the approvals for this type of project. And then it also includes their oversight of the actual construction. You know, everything goes along as planned. Things go on budget. We award the job to a general contractor. They oversee him, make sure he's doing the job properly. So it's basically a long-term cover everything type of deal from the management side, the construction.
Follow-up. Then is the Park and Rec, they're initiating, meaning they are giving you suggestions on how this is going to be built? Or are you just, they just gave you some ideas and you're, they're done? Would they don't have any final say in the design or anything like that?
We will be working with the winning bidder to do the design. It's part of the process, and the, what we have been showing everybody was a concept, whether or not the pool will look exactly like that concept. We'll yet to be seen until we get to the process based on the size and everything else. So the answer is, we will be working on this right through the process, right to the end.
That brings me to my question then. Nothing, I don't know any of these companies. I mean, I just saw it in the paper. They had a list of four there. I do know somebody from one of them, but that's not related or anything. Ethics. Why is it, there is this discrepancy of over 250, almost 300,000, it's almost 100% increase between the low bidder and the high bidder, and there's two in between. You're, the guys aren't building it. You're just designing it and overseeing the project and getting the permits. I'm just wondering to the Park and Rec, why this group was chosen? I understand that in Part A of the bid process, they said that they had scored higher. What is included in that Part A process that scored them so much higher because their price is so much higher?
Well, one of the things was their experience. They worked together as a team. They've been doing pools throughout the state of Connecticut. They have built more pools than the other three companies who were bidding on the process together. And we've seen their work. We've gotten facts about their work, and we were the most comfortable with their process and their understanding of what needs to be done. And they were very helpful with some suggestions along the way, as all the people who came to present that, those two evenings.
Suggestions along the way mean nothing, but because anybody, that's what they're doing to try and get business, no matter who it is. The, but you're saying they're built. They built more than the other three combined.
Combined, correct.
But we just said, or they just said, they don't build it. They supervise the company. So there's a company that does the actual building?
Well, the company is a team. They work as a team together. These contractors who work with TLB have been working with them for years, and they've been the ones who've been doing those 30-plus pools that they did over the last several years. So the engineers, the architects, this is a team that is continuously worked with. We had people come in that never worked together before, and that is always a little concerning, because we don't know how the team is going to gel. We have a group of people that come in and they've been doing this, and they've been doing it, and they're surrounding communities, and they work together and they have the same team members. It's pretty comfortable.
Then I'm at a loss here, because how do we know who the low bidder is going to be on the builder? Are you going out to bid on the builder, or does the team that they want get the building automatically?
No. After the project's designed, then you're going to go out to bid.
Competitive bid, yes.
Right. So how do we know to, the gentleman here in the check shirt, how do we know that the company that the person in the green shirt is saying is going to be working with them is going to actually get the bid?
Well, there's only so many companies who actually do pools. You can see based on what we put out in the, in the request, we only got four companies come in to make presentations. So it's a unique program. It's a unique project, and these guys all work together. My guess is the people that are going to come in to do the construction bids are people who know how to build a pool. Building a pool is a lot different than building a school.
Understand, no question about it. There are multiple pool companies in the state of Connecticut, New York, Massachusetts. I don't know where you're getting it from, but getting the bids from, but I'm just at a loss here, because even though it gels, and I understand that philosophy, we don't know that they're actually going to be the actual winner. So it might be the gentleman in the green shirt company might get the bid as the highest bidder, but the company that he wants to work with might not be the company. It might be a company that he's never worked with before. So to the person in the check shirt, it takes down his philosophy that they gel together, yet we're spending $300,000 more from the low bidder, and I don't know who the low bidder was, or 150, 200,000 for the middle bidders.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a question about
Check shirt is Mr. Savinelli. Mr. Gollak's in the middle.
I know Mr. Gollak.
Mr. Chairman. Building Committee, your name again, sir?
Hal Cheat.
And you're, are you committee member, or are you a member of the successful bidder?
Committee member.
Thank you. He's not a member of the company that won the bid.
Oh, okay.
He's a committee member.
All right. It sounded like he was from that company, and that's why, I don't know who he is. That's why I was
Sure. Mayor?
I think there's some confusion here. Mike, were you, when you referred to a team, were you referring to the principal people working on the design, or were you referring to the ultimate contractor plus?
Yeah, on the design and basically the design at this point, because the bidding is going to go out to particular contractors, obviously. But again, like I said, there's only going to be so many pool companies out there, because the requirements are people who build pools of this size for a municipality. So you don't have Hunter Pool here, or Brothers, or so on, who do, you know, residential work. So there's not a lot of companies out there. So there's a good chance, after doing 30 pools over the last number of years, they're going to end up working with a contractor they're familiar with.
But when you used the word team, you weren't referring to the ultimate contractor?
Am I referring to that? No, I'm referring to this team right here at the $625,000.
Right. There's a team working
That's correct.
as part of the design. That's the team he's talking about, not the ultimate contractor.
And I misunderstood what he said, because it sounded like to me, and maybe I was wrong, but it sounded like that he was implying that they work together with the builder, because then it gets back to the original question, that it's a design, it's schematics, and as long as maybe these other companies haven't built as many, but doesn't mean they're not as qualified. I don't know why they're kicked out for that kind of numbers, and that's all I'm saying. So what makes the section A, what is in that section A of the bid process that they scored so highly and everybody scored so lowly on?
I may sum that up in competence. We just saw the competence in the presentation and the pools they've done. We've been out to visit their pools, and we just felt extremely comfortable with what they had to offer.
And you saw the other companies pool, because none of these companies, but none of these guys built a pool.
But they are essential to getting the pool built. When the design is made, the design needs to be made so the pool will hold its, hold its lifetime, and you don't build a pool without testing soil, making sure you've got good ground levels and everything else that goes along with it from a technical and architectural and engineering basis.
And I understand that, and I assume that any of the four bidders understand the same thing, because they've built. And I'm just saying, I just find it odd that it's the highest of all the bidders, and it's a big spread. It's not like it's 20,000 or 30,000. It's almost 90, 100% difference between the bidders, and that's a large span. Thank you.
Right. But to clarify Mr. Gross's point, we had, this is a professional services bid. It's not your typical lowest qualified bidder. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you have Part A, which has to do with the qualifications and experience, and then Part B is the dollars. And am I correct to understand that the score on Part A with respect to the qualifications and experience was so much higher that it outweighed the cost savings on Part B?
Right. That's correct.
Yeah, there's a formula that the purchasing department uses, correct?
Okay.
So, and in essence, then you would have in Part A, which now should be, is probably public information?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So in that, since Mr. Savinelli mentioned the other projects, their competency, so there must be ones that they named in the bid process, so we could see which pools they've actually bid. Do you remember which pools versus the other companies?
He's got a document there.
I've got a document here to show some of the pools that they've done here in the state of Connecticut.
But and also you said that the others, not implying they were incompetent, but did you look at their pools that they built?
We had one company that didn't even do a pool. It's never done, basically, I mean, I think they've done one pool. We have a schematic here showing how we, what happened, who does what, and we have these to hand out.
Well, the council should have.
Actually, if you have enough copies for us, that would be helpful. They were not in our packet.
One thing to note also may be that the timing was two separate packages that were received at the same time, the same date. One was the Package A, the other one was the Package B. Package A was the qualifications. Package B was the cost. Per the RFP, Package A was opened, and we performed our evaluation. Prior to the opening of Package B, we performed and completed our evaluation before any numbers were actually even seen, and it wasn't until the rallying and tallying of the scores of Package A was done that Package B was actually opened and the prices were exposed. Thank you.
I'm going to have Hal talk to this, because he's designed this.
So this wasn't designed by the town? This was designed by
This here?
in-house, by your, by somebody on your committee?
Right.
As Mike referenced earlier, we got as part of Part A, the qualifications from each firm that were submitted to the purchasing department. We got very extensive booklets. firm that were submitted to the purchasing department. We got very extensive booklets which listed all their, their team members, their backgrounds, the various projects and pools they'd worked on. After that, we conducted interviews with all four firms and asked them all a series of questions about their experience and capabilities. What the sheet that you have here in front of you is just a very quick synopsis of these four very large books that we received from each firm with just some high points for each of the firms that we thought were key to point out. One was whether they were doing the, actually, obviously the majority of the pool design is the pool itself. You've got parking lots and other things that are ancillary to it, whether they do that in-house or they used an outside consultant for the work. And you see two of them did it in-house, two of them, you know, subcontracted it out, whether they had worked with them previously, that consultant, because they're obviously the key part of the team, the pool consultant, if they have one. We listed the civil and site designers, which are probably the second most important part of the team. And one thing we felt was important there was whether or not they'd worked in town before and have the experience with inland wetlands and the various town departments. All four did. And then more importantly are the last three items there, which are the number of pools per their qualifications that they submitted, that they had designed in the past. And these are pools similar to ours. Outdoor pools, municipal pools. Several of them had a lot of indoor facilities, you know, high school pools, pools in New York City, for instance, in downtown buildings that really don't apply to this type of project. And we, and you really need to take that into account. So and the other thing is the number of outdoor pools similar to ours that were designed in Connecticut. And that's a very important factor, considering that one of the major milestones we have to get through on this project is approval by the State Department of Public Health. It's a long and very tenuous process. They look over with a fine tooth comb for a facility like this. And if you look across the bottom at the numbers, TLB, who received the highest score from the committee, has done 21 outdoor Connecticut pools similar to this, which is more than, as Mike mentioned earlier, the other three firms combined. So this sort of, you know, gives you a little bit of the background from the four detailed proposals and interviews that we held of where we sort of saw the qualifications, the different design teams that proposed. Thank you.
One question. So this is the first time you're seeing this then tonight? Because I saw everybody looking at it pretty diligently. It was going on. I just thought maybe, so you had no idea. Can I ask what number two and number three did for how many pool, you said the number, the T something company had 21 pools. How much did number two have?
Five.
Five. And they're all?
Now, they, that's in Connecticut. They are a national firm, so they had more pools than that, but that was five pools in the state of Connecticut.
So they have a lot of experience doing pools. Did they, have you checked that they do pools in Massachusetts, New York? And I don't even know who number two is. I don't even know, you know, who it is. And I'm not asking, it doesn't make a difference. Alls I'm saying is, I'm just, it's a large span. Thank you.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. First thing I want to say is that I really want us to get a new community pool. I want it to be the best that it can be. But I want to make a statement in that I, going back to Mr. Heinz's remarks in question and answer, there's a reason why people like myself and others get backing material. We want to come to these meetings somewhat informed. And also to see that the council, which I've seen over the course of many years, not have the material before the meeting, especially when they're probably on your side and I'm on your side. It's just very frustrating because I want to speak to supporting this. And I don't understand why this material wasn't available prior.
It's a typical rule. We don't have a lot of questions about a bidding process or the selection process. In fact, as far as I can remember, this is one of the first times it's occurred. I mean, you start talking about making information available. It's very helpful if ahead of time people ask what information they may be interested in because you start looking at what information may be pertinent to this and the breadth of that. There's a lot of guesswork that would go on as far as how far back you want to go, maps, all kinds of issues that surround this general subject matter. So it's, this is the place to discuss and find out. If, if information is requested, then we have it here. That's the reason to be at the meeting.
Well, I would hazard a guess that the committee and Parks and Rec thought this was important enough to bring copies of this tonight. And I don't know that this wasn't available to them earlier to send out. Also, just another comment is that, again, I get the backing material. It gave a notice of a public hearing. It talked about bonding. And then I read the Record Journal and see this chart that talks about the scoring. And again, it would have been useful to kind of know what this formula is, how it's done. And again, I say this as somebody who's an ally. I really want to be helpful here. It's just pretty frustrating and I wish it was otherwise because again, I want to see this succeed.
There was another hand in the back, was it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Heinz, 342 South Elm Street. Going to the, to the mayor's point, even if you're not going to make it or available to us as residents, at the very least, the people making the decision should have the information before tonight. The people making the decision, you're asking them to approve bonding for $625,000. I mean, the people making the decision should at least have the information to know how the commission got to the point or chose the company that's going to be doing the design. Should have the, they're the ones making the decision. They should have that information before tonight. You know, setting aside whether the, the public gets the information. Thank you.
Ms. Proshino?
Good evening. Fran Le France Proshino, Jackson Avenue. I'm very much for the pool and I do agree that the information should have been out sooner, but my question isn't about that. In the design, are they going to be doing, I mean, have they gotten to a conversation about either food trucks or any kind of a food for sale?
There's been discussions about concession stand versus food trucks.
Can you tell me what, what you're considering?
I can't, not at this point, I can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance appropriating $625,000 for the community pool park design and bond authorization be adopted?
Yes, so moved.
So I, I heard laughing and Shortell at the same time. You can pick a mover in a second or... All right. And I bring it to the council for discussion. And first is Councilor Shortell.
Chairman, I did have some opening remarks that I wanted to make. I wasn't sure.
You know what?
Where, when it was appropriate, but.
Now is good.
Okay. So if you indulge me for about two minutes, the pool committee invested considerable effort to prepare a detailed technical specification for consultant services for the pool design, municipal approvals and construction administration. We've developed a preliminary project schedule as well to provide the town a guide, which you have on the back sheet of that handout that I passed to you. We worked closely with the town engineer, purchasing agent who guided in finalizing the invitation to bid, the two-part system, technical evaluation and cost. The selection process followed the town's procurement rules for consultant services to the letter. Those rules allow a consultant's qualifications to be weighed with the cost proposal. The total cost includes services, inspections, oversight, administration during construction. A field walk to respond to the proposers' inquiries was held on February 7th, 2019. The committee conducted interviews of the proposers on February 27 and 28 and scored the firms against their criteria set forth in the bid specification. All four firms suggested the pool concept may be too big and the initial concept budget estimate likely inadequate. Please be assured that this committee is dedicated to finding creative ways to trim the construction wherever practical. March 15th, 2019, part B revealed the firm with the highest resultant score for combined technical and fee bid. It was TLB Architecture LLC of Chester, Connecticut. As Mr. Savinelli said, they best met the established criteria for pool design, expertise, size and complexity of large outdoor pools, experience with Connecticut DPH and the past relationship with their team members, along with other criteria. TLB has offered to reduce their base fee should the construction cost be reduced. This and their references suggested alternatives to attain cost reductions and their past experience gives us confidence in our recommendation for their selection and preliminary design fee approval. The total fee is spread out over phases, so this is not a commitment to spend the full amount. Essentially, each phase will be awarded as the project is advanced and authorized by the town to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So as, as I understood what you said, and I, and I think this was discussed during the public hearing, part A was the qualifications and there were a series of objective criteria and the, the successful bidder, if you will, was clearly the highest scoring.
Sure. There were four criteria items. Overall ability and capability to perform the work and meet the anticipated project schedule. Overall expertise and demonstrated knowledge of Connecticut DPH requirements, Connecticut Public Health Code related to public pools or design criteria of equivalent review agency. Specific experience with designing and permitting five large public pools in the past five years and other recreational aquatic amenities and the unique approach to this assignment and ability to maintain an aggressive schedule.
And, and so when you compared the score on A to the bid dollars on B, was there a formula that resulted in, in, in the highest dollar amount ended up being the successful bidder?
So purchasing has a formula. It was a sealed bid, so we hadn't, they turned everything in on February 22nd. We did the, we did the evaluations on the 27th and 28th of February, ranked and scored them, forwarded them to purchasing. They made that public. They ranked them one through four. And then on March 19th, or March 15th of 2019, there was a, the envelopes were unsealed and it revealed the cost. The cost was then given a ranking and then you merged the two to get a successful bidder. Not a high bidder, not a low bidder, a successful bidder.
Okay. And, and I thought what was significant to me in your comments, so it, it appears to me that their dollar bid is about 10% of what the projected cost of, of the pool we were talking about last year would have cost to build. Does that sound about right? We were looking at a $6 million park.
No, you're 10% probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so there's, there's a basis for, you know, what the dollar amount came to. But at the same time, if we're talking about a scaled back project, because what I further understood from what you said is that the design that we looked at, the, the drawing that's.
Concept.
Concept, thank you, is, is not a $6 million project. It's probably much more expensive than that.
Correct. That's what was revealed through the evaluation phase.
And so if we are looking at a more scaled down project that suits the community's needs, but doesn't necessarily have a lot of the bells and whistles in the concept, and we're talking about a less expensive project, you also said.
The 600,000 would not be a real number. It'd be less.
Okay.
I think it's important that when we talk about the scale and the pullback, we are not going to eliminate much. We're going to actually just downsize spray pad, downsize the actual pool itself and then look at the lap pool in a different way. So what we're, we're hoping to have the same attraction, but just to a size that makes more sense.
There's a lot of work to be done to develop a new program.
Certainly. Thank you. Moving on, Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for all the work you've done. I know it's been a long process and it's, you moved really quickly, so I appreciate it. I just want to react to two public comments very quickly. I agree that the agenda items, the backup should be online. We get an email with it online. There's no reason it can't be posted on the website. I don't, I don't see why it can't be. And I also agree that the pool season needs to go into the end of August. I mean, you can't have a pool, close it in the middle of August. I mean, it's, I think we've been there with our kids the last few years on the day that it closed. It was like August 11th and we had two or three of the hottest weeks of the year. So I would even be in favor of shifting the season. If it was a budget issue, I would shift the season later because June seems to be cold some years and I would almost shift it to, you know, July 4th to Labor Day, if that were, if budget were an issue. But anyway, that's just my two cents. Can you, this, this kind of, Chairman Savoni actually, through his questions just now kind of answered some of my questions that you answered them through your answers. But I'm just trying to understand. So we, if we commit to this tonight, the next decision point is in September, based on the schedule?
Um, I believe it's probably midsummer that we would come back to you with a design program and a real hard estimate of what the pool would be.
September 12th.
September 12th.
That's, that's after the approval process with wetlands and P&amp;Z because obviously they could have some impact on the cost. So until we get through those, you don't have the actual best estimate. But yeah, by early September would be the next time we, we'd be back in front of the council.
So just, and I guess this is my first pool, so forgive the questions. So September comes, so you come to us and let's, let's just, let's pretend it. So it's going to cost $10 million because you have to move the stream to build. I'm just making this up. So you go to the mayor first, I'm thinking, or do you come to us directly? Where, what is the process?
So we'll, we'll gather all the necessary information and have a meeting with the mayor.
Okay. So at that point, the mayor looks at that, $10 million. I mean, at that point, the mayor could just say, this isn't happening, correct? I mean.
No, I think, I think what would be, what would happen would be there'd be a presentation. But clearly, I mean, it's an administrative function. I would want to know what is going on ahead of time and certainly I'd form opinions about whether I would approve it or not. But at that point, it, whatever was developed would be shared.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we make decisions thereafter.
Okay. And then at that point, that September date, it's September 12th in here, I think, that, are we actually voting that night or that's on that funding or are we just giving you our blessing and then you keep going? When is the actual, when do we actually commit the money, whatever it is? I'm just trying to figure that out.
If I'm following this, we, the design may not have been completed at the point we're talking about what it basically looks like. It may not be a bid ready document. That would probably take longer than what would be necessary. I'm not sure that it would make sense to spend all the time on a complete design and have, have, with, with a bid ready document and have lack of agreement on what that design would be. So there'd be an interim step there. Thereafter, the, the calculations, the, the specifications would be developed and then it would go out the bid. Once we had a bid price, then it would be adoption of an ordinance in order to fund it.
Okay. And that, okay.
Also, just to mention, we won't come back with a $10 million pool. It's a show in that.
Well, one, one thing to also mention, by September 12th, and we have a month in here for approvals by the town, at that point, we'll have the schematic design, hopefully to a point where we're at a reasonable budget. We will have a budget that's. We will have a budget that's part of the consultant's obligation is at the end of that schematic design process to provide us with a, you know, a good budget. You know, obviously, it's not a bid. At that point, though, if you look at the cost schedule values from the consultants will only have committed, I think it's around 160 or 165,000 of that $625,000 design fee. And at that point, if in September, you know, the decision is made not to move forward, basically, that's the, that's your exposure come September. It's not the entire 625, the entire 625,000 goes over almost a two and a half year period from now until the completion of construction administration when the pool is done. So, it's a step-by-step process. Then if September, things are looking good, and I'm just walking through the schedule we provided, they go on, they produce the final documents where we're at the point where, you know, around this time next year, we actually are ready to go out for competitive construction bids on the pool. And then again, you'll have another opportunity at the end of that period to basically, you know, yay or nay the, the construction cost as it comes in on, on hard bids based on the final design. So, it's a step-by-step process of authorizations.
That's, that's very helpful. Thank you for that, that description. Is, you know, I'm just wondering too, as part of this, because it hasn't really come up, is there a Plan B for this property? If this, and I'm not trying to be pessimistic, but I'm just, if this all falls apart and we don't go through with the pool, is there a Plan B? Can the property be sold to a developer? I don't even know what it's zoned for. I mean, could it be developed into a park? Is that, or are we just kind of going to focus on this and then?
I'm not aware of any Plan B. I mean, we'll have to reach a conclusion on this and it-
There's no plan. Initially, we were talking about, we had some discussions about possibly what may be there, but there is no official plan.
Okay. Okay. I, you know, this is, I mean, I'm for this, and I go back to what Chairman Servoni was talking about with the initial presentation where we, we were presented with, when I think it was in the fall-
September.
September. And we, you know, some examples were cited from Trumbull and there were, you know, there were the nice drawings, God bless you. And, you know, four and a half to six million was the range that you gave, and it was like, "Yeah, it looks really good. We're going to have all this stuff." And then now it's like, well, that was kind of maybe not, that's not doable, is what I'm hearing, to have everything in it that was sort of talked about back then. So-
Right, based on the concept right now, what was revealed through the, the interview process, the scope of the project doesn't meet the program, so-
Got it.
The budget.
Got it. So, I mean, I'm, you know, from my perspective, I am for this, but I'd like to see it stay in that four and a half to six million dollar total cost range. And I feel like maybe, you know, as a council, maybe, I don't know if you need to hear that. I don't know where everyone else is on this.
I think the committee would be, it would, we'd appreciate it very much if there was some indication of what the threshold would be.
From the, from each counselor, from the council, yeah.
From a design standpoint, because I mean, if things go okay tonight, we have two months worth of, of meetings and trying to develop what this pool park is going to be.
Right.
Without having some sort of a ceiling or a figure, you know, we're kind of spinning our wheels.
Right. Understood. Well, you have my number, and I would say the lower you can get it, the better, considering, you know, since, since I was all in like nine months ago, we've lost B M S, then the bond rating got reduced, and, you know, everything else is happening. So, I think that it's not like we're getting any better economic news.
And I think that we understand that and trying to take that into consideration.
And just to your point of the bells and whistles, we are going to work hard to have everything that was on that original concept involved in this pool, but again, downsized. So, the bells and whistles will be there, so we still, this place still should be a nice destination.
Right. Now, I appreciate that. I had another question, and I don't know if it's for the mayor or Attorney Small who's like way over there. I don't know if it's for you, Chairman. With food, it was a food truck question? It's a hypothetical question because you haven't committed one way or the other, but the number of the public asked about food trucks. And I don't, I have the ordinance book here. I don't think there's any ordinance that would prevent food trucks from operating there.
They're actually regulated by the, I believe, the Health Department.
Okay.
So, I believe you've had food trucks there when the pool was open.
Oh, we are, okay.
And they write the vendors-
Yeah, we're going to actually be putting out a bid, a mobile vending bid coming out probably next month for the parks, certain parks.
Okay. Okay. And then last question, because this, and I read the article in the paper, the pool is open this year?
Correct.
Have you had that, so have you already had that last walkthrough, where you looked to see if pipes have cracked and like you're, it's definitely open, or it, because I always thought there was like that last walkthrough like in May, once we were through all the bad weather and we had to make sure that everything was-
Well, pretty soon we'll be working with Public Works to go in there and just make sure that it survived the winter and-
Right.
And all systems go.
So, it's budgeted to be open, but-
Correct. We're planning on it. We're taking interviews for lifeguards as we normally do. We're proceeding as normal.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you again for everything. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming here. You know, it seems like you were given a charge, and, you know, I'm at least happy with where we potentially are right now. You know, the problem with the figure number, which, you know, we can have talks offline, but, you know, if somebody says $4 million and then goes out to bid, mysteriously, the paper comes back at $4 million, you know, and that's, that's the problem when we talk about this stuff in public, so. Have we also, and I don't know if Counselor Shertel was, you know, we were sort of had the same wavelength going on for a bit, because I guess what you also could do is if we decide that a pool for the community is the best use of this property, we could solicit someone else to build the pool and to run the pool. And, you know, then we get the benefit of the pool and, you know, take it off of your shoulders, you know, that's another way to go here too. So, you know, just thinking outside the box, so. But just, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that all that's before us tonight, the decision is made administratively to select this group and that we're just dealing with bond or not bond?
That's, that's correct. This was a professional services bid process, the bids, if the work's going to get done, the bid's been awarded, and we're just here to fund it or not.
Okay. I'm just going to go a little bit further. Mr. Galak, in your opening report remarks, and you said something recently about the project being too large. What does that actually mean?
So, the discovery while meeting with the four firms in the interview process, one of the questions, or a few of the questions centered around the concept, the scope, and does the budget estimate of four and a half to six million meet that? And all four firms said that it doesn't. And that one firm went as far as saying that it's, could be over almost $2 million over their estimation.
Okay, based upon your ideal-
Based upon the square footage of all the buildings that are there, the square footage of the aquatic spaces, and using a, an industry standard of $200 a square foot, adding soft cost to that, one firm went as far as saying it could be 7.9 million.
And that's where you meant with the budget was inadequate for the two to come together, the project?
I, I think one of the things to point out is that-
Well, it was, was interesting in the interviews, because again, we got the listing of everyone's school experience, or pool experiences, to include the sizes of the pools. And as we came to find out, the 13,000 square foot main pool that we had in the concept or feasibility program that we put out along with the RFP package was much, much larger than all the consultants ended up saying we really need for a town of this size with the number of bathers that John projects. And of course, everything cost-wise relates to the size of the pool. So, they said, yes, the estimate and the feasibility study is probably light, but on the flip side, the size of the pool for the town of Wallingford, and they listed the various towns and municipalities and the sizes of the pools they just built. That 13,000 square foot pool was a big pool, and it probably is a lot bigger than, than we really need here in town. And again, the size of the pool and the surrounding areas go down, the price goes down. So, it was actually a good thing to find out from a hand-in-hand exercise.
So, ultimately, who's going to make that decision? You know, I like my wide-open spaces. I like my neighbors not being right on top of me, right? Same thing with swimming. I don't want, you know, so who's going to make the determination which pool, I mean, what size? Is that you guys? Is that us together?
It's collectively with our committee and the T L B team. And then, you know, the comment was made in one of them was that we're building a, you know, you're not building a church for Easter, you know, meaning that this pool was still too big, so.
Example of that is they did the New Britain pool. Now, the population in New Britain is 72,000 people, and they did a pool smaller than the one that we were planning. And theirs was more like 10,000 or 11,000, was it 9,000 square feet, I think?
That was about the biggest pool that they-
Yeah, 9,000 square feet in the city of New Britain with the 72,000 population versus us. So, right there, and those kind of examples with Glastonbury and Windsor and other places, we could just see that we're a little out of, out of sorts with the size of the pool. However, when we looked at this from the beginning, what the real pool looked like, the big pool, we thought we cut it back enough. And obviously, all four of the companies said that we should be able to live with a pool under 10,000 square feet.
So long as the pool in New Britain and those other towns is not over capacity.
Right.
It's the one variable that's missing.
Right. And the thing with those pools, they had splash pads, and they had lap pools, and they had a playground, so they're very similar to ours.
Okay. I just wanted to ask some questions about the bonding itself. So, I guess to Mr. Bose, if I may, is there actually an intent to bond, issue these bonds?
Yes, that's, this, this would be bonded.
Okay. And, and will it be the full amount?
Would it be, it would depend on what we spend. If this is the max and we end up spending less than that, then obviously, we'd borrow less.
Okay, based upon what they're saying, but what, I, you know, the full amount of the design, certainly what we're hearing is if the project gets smaller, the number's going to get smaller. So, let's say it's 450,000 opposed to 625, which is the, the total amount of the design phase. Is it the intention to bond that whole amount of the design phase?
Yes. The 625 or the 400 in that example that you left, that you just presented?
The amount that we intend to spend on the whole design phase.
Well, if we spent all of it, we would bond all of it, but we would only bond, I believe in that example you just gave, 400,000, we would bond 400,000. Of course, there would be $200,000 of an appropriation left, AKA, the legal authority to spend. So, when the committee came back and the council had, ran this process again, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera, and decided to go with a pool and say that's going to cost all in, let's just say 4 million, for, for lack of a better number, you would revise this ordinance for the $4 million, or actually, we'd subtract out the unused portion of the design, because we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't need that extra $200,000, if you will. So, we'd, we'd true up once we knew what the, the actual construction, maybe some contingency and maybe furniture, equipment, and whatever else is going to come down at that time. And then just reduce, if we only spent $400,000 on design, then we wouldn't need, you know, that $200,000 could be used towards lowering the amount that we need to get approved if and when that time comes.
I know. Mayor, did you want to say something? I saw you-
I was just going to say, and by the same token, if a design is completed and it's $400,000, but it never gets constructed, it's probably a case that we would not look to bond the 400,000.
That, that's something we, we might cash fund over a few years, correct. But my assumption is that there's going to be a, a project here.
Well, the way, the way this is structured, it's a reimbursement, right? So, it says the bond shall be issued to reimburse expenditures not later than 18 months after the date of the expenditure or substantial completion of the project. So, is it our intention under this authority to pay cash and then to reimburse the town through the bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
That's usually what we do, or sometimes even a combination, depending upon the timing of things.
Okay. So, my initial question was whether or not we intended to issue the bonds. Now, I'm hearing we only intend to issue the bonds if the pool is going to get built.
Well, that, that, and depending upon ultimately what the entire design would cost.
If the intent right now is to have a pool project, so our intention is to keep all the costs in one place, which would ultimately be bonding ordinances. If for some reason that is disrupted, then obviously, the intent is disrupted and you adjust to that. To try to go out to the market for a $400,000 borrowing is, is ridiculous.
You wouldn't do that, no.
But the intent right now is we have a project, and as that becomes more, better articulated, and there's an actual bid price, then all of it is kept in the same funding pattern.
So, can we, why can't we start that now, and then if we need to bond it, cross that bridge when we come to it?
That's, that's probably what we're going to do.
Wait, but what's before us here tonight is to bond it.
But this is the, this is the authorization to spend. That's correct. And, and that authorization to fund it is with bonds. And, and if you read through the document itself, you'll see that other sources of financing, and Joe is pretty widespread, including if there's ever any state or federal grants, we highly doubt that, obviously, but you never know, cash funding, et cetera, et cetera.
I didn't see the grants in here. I saw other forms of bonds, but why is it in the public interest to issue all or some of these bonds?
I, I didn't hear the question fully, or I did-
Why is it in the public interest to issue some or all of these bonds?
Why is it in the public interest?
Yeah.
Well, number one, the intention is it's something that's going to have a long-term life, and this is a part of the cost to go, that goes with that, a pool area, obviously. So, spreading that over, you know, more than just an annual or even a two-year budget obviously has a much better impact on your mill rate, et cetera, et cetera, than, you know, having something spike up all at once and having to pay it up to 600,000 or even $400,000 all at once.
But the, the 600 or the 400,000 is going to cost us more because we're going to pay interest?
If, if we bond it, true, yeah.
That's what we're authorizing here, because if we don't-
That's correct.
Then you have to pay cash, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so it costs us more. So, it's, you're saying it's in the public interest that we pay more?
Just-
No, it's-
Yes, it's in the public-
It's in the public interest to, to spread the payments out over the life.
Hi, sir. I, I think I see what the problem here is.
Joe, just identify yourself if you don't mind.
Joe Fazi, Bond Counsel. I, I think that Mr. Fishbein is reading-
If you could stay close to the microphone.
I believe that Mr. Fishbein is reading Section 7 of the ordinance. Is that right?
I tend to read everything, yes.
Good. What's, what Section 7 says is that if the interest on these bonds are going to be taxable or qualified private activity bonds, then it's in the public, public interest to issue those bonds, which is a finding required by statute. It's not expected that this section would ever apply. It's, shall we say, boilerplate that authorizes bonds of that type, that bear that type of interest, if necessary, to be issued.
As opposed to the general obligation bonds?
Well, general obligation describes the security of the bonds. They would both be secured by the taxing power of the town. These bonds describe the tax treatment on the federal level.
So, it's just saying that if those opportunities open themselves up, if we have the choice between the two, that that is in the benefit of the public?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. I just wanted to draw that out. I think, Mr. Chairman, at this point, those are all the questions that I had.
Thank you. Counselor Morgenstein.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much again, all your hard work, and so much more quickly than the last pool try, and we're going to get to the finish line this time. The, the big thing that I had- The, the big thing that I had, which seemed to be answered, then got a little confused, and now I think I have it straight, is this bonding question. So the six twenty-five right now, we're intending to bond as a part of the whole big project, correct? Yeah, so it's not that we suddenly think that six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars should be a bond we take out. We do much larger amounts that are gonna be long-term projects, our twenty-plus year pool. Um, but it sounds that we will currently be paying cash, paying ourselves back. So am I to understand that this is cash from this year, two thousand nineteen? Where? No, not at all.
About now. The directions are off. Um, sorry about that. Uh, it's whenever the expenditures would have to be paid.
And they're gonna gradually come about, so some of this may, or may not, come before us in a, um, request, um, prior to the new budget year.
That's correct.
So take money from here, so would we be taking from?
No, no, we, what, um, what you folks are doing is you're authorizing us to spend the funds.
But where will the quote cash come from until we pay ourselves back?
Okay, yeah, we, we set up, um, if the council acts in the affirmative tonight, we will set up a bookkeeping fund, uh, separate from all other bookkeeping funds, just so we can track all of those activities, both revenues and expenditures, uh, in that fund. And like you've seen come before you many times, and you see it in the, in the audit report, the, the, in column or form, if you will. So there will be a bookkeeping fund called Community Pool, or something like that, or Renovation, whatever we're gonna call it. Um, and it will be the authorization to spend for six twenty-five. So in essence, we're spending cash out of that fund. There is no cash in that fund, there's no bank in that fund. We deal basically with one bank account. And that, if, if we spend a hundred thousand dollars, let's say tomorrow, uh, there would be a deficit cash position in that bookkeeping fund, because our overall cash outlaid, outlayed that. When we sell the bonds, and let's say, uh, it got up to six hundred thousand that we spent, or five million that we spent, uh, we would then bring that cash in as we sell the bonds. We might sell the bonds over two separate lots, depending upon the timing of when this project, um, you know, expenditures occur, because you try to match your expenditures as best you can with your bonding. Um, and then that's, in that bookkeeping fund is when though that cash being replenished would be recognized as well. So it would wipe out that cash deficit. Sorry to bore you with the, some of the bookkeeping stuff, but that's basically where. But basically, it's from the town's cash, which we, we then would replenish later.
And then when I hear people use the term, or some combination of bonds and cash, I, I think historically, um, we don't bond well. We say, oh, you know, well, let's, let's make it do this way. And I think, you know, do we, can we, as a council, is it at budget season? Is it at our next meeting, um, that we could perhaps say, we as a council intend to want to have a five million dollar pool, six million dollar pool, come to some agreement that allows you on your very tight timeline, because you want to swim this summer, demolish at the end of the summer, get it done by twenty twenty-one on your timeline here. And if you're futzing around coming back and forth to us, so as a timeline for us as the counselors, can we make, is it budget season, or is it just a agenda item where we as a group come together, having talked to you, the mayor, these guys, with some figure? We do want to bond X amount of money costing pool?
Well, I think the next step, uh, would be if everything goes through and the timeline is met and prices are achieved or received for, and accepted for building the, the pool. At that point, this is gonna come back to you folks, there's gonna be another public hearing to increase this authorization to spend through a revised bond ordinance.
But I think I'm hearing from Mr. Galak, we'd really like to feel confident that we're developing a pool that costs, I mean, we're not looking to, so we've been saying four and a half to six, but it sounds to me like you would like to know, four and a half, five, six, as you're making your plan. And I hear the mayor, I can hear his brain going, but we don't know what's coming from the state, and this, and this, and this. But I think, having the discussion, when we're at the point here where we are looking to have the architectural engineering schematics permits, it sounds to me like you're not sure what you are giving us. You're giving us some bells and whistles within a smaller size, because we've had this grand size pool that doesn't fit what we need. But, I can't, I can't buy a house by saying, well, I don't know if I'm gonna have a job. I don't know if my, you know, such and such income is coming in. We, we are in a real situation where the state has various issues. But, we have, I believe everyone I'm thinking up here wants this. I'm believing the people in the audience want this. I hear a large outcry in the town, we want this. The committing to this is committing to a town that attracts people. People come here, people buy things. All of the things that grow this town are what this pool is going to become. Am I correct that you would like to, rather than continue spinning your wheels, have some firmer number?
It's extremely helpful, because it's hard to deliver something, not knowing what the threshold is.
Yeah.
If I may interject, um, you know, there's a typical process for designing something, going out to bid with it, and then bonding for it. And Counselor Fishbein during his comments made the point that if you announce that you're willing to spend X amount of dollars, when you go out to bid, the bids are gonna come in every bit of what you've announced you intended to spend. And the opportunity for savings is gone. I mean, I think there's good sense to doing it that way. I think, I think if we wanna communicate to you directly, and not necessarily in a public forum, what we're willing to spend, that might be of greater benefit to the whole process. So, I, I'll yield the floor back to you, Counselor Morgenstein.
I, I, and I can go with that, so, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to, and I'm not asking for it to be right here, right now. I'm simply saying, um, you're asking for that, and I think there is a real value to that. You don't go buying a house and say, I think I want the hundred thousand, or maybe I want the four hundred thousand. You know what you want in your pool. If you come to us and say, it looks like we can have this size for the main pool, this for the splash pad, this, and maybe you bring us three things. This looks to be your four and a half million, this looks to be your five, this looks to be your five and a half. And then we make some decisions together. Okay, and then, so that, that was my thought on that. And then, um, I, I'm just gonna reiterate again, which isn't really this hearing, but we want this pool to support itself. And so, um, I hear that the way we, um, book classes with the Park and Rec, you can use online, but if you go to Park and Rec, um, staff can't handle credit cards there. We need to come into this period of time with how we pay for passes, how we provide passes, what we're doing for passes. Um, and, um, the length of the season is truly, a, and I trust you guys that you know your works within this town of how to make that happen. I'm looking to support that is the other side of the whole thing. Because we're gonna outlay money, and then it's gonna come back to us, not only from passes, it's kinda like, you know, buying a newspaper. It's not the newspaper that makes the money. It's the fact that we're gonna make the money off this pool by being an attractive town that people want to own a business in, um, have the people that come and work to that business want to live in this town rather than go live somewhere else, move into Wallingford, because it's Wallingford. Thank you.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a whole bunch of issues in my head here. First, what else does it know, right? Um, for starters, the whole, let me just go on record as saying this. The whole idea of putting a ceiling on anything at this stage of the game is foolhardy. I've seen too many experience situations in the past where, without knowing what we were trying to do, somewhere along the way, this body or the administration or the combination thereof put a dollar figure. And then that drove the program. And it didn't work out as well as it probably should have. And I talked about the school, the last large school renovation project as a perfect example. And everybody was involved in that. But at some point, from the beginning, and I was on the board at the time, from the beginning, we asked somebody, an employee, to come up with just an estimate. And once that number got out there, once thirty-five million dollars got on the table, it drove the bus. And it, and from that point forward, the whole process was wrong. And it never worked out as well as it should have. It was nice, but we're looking at another one because of it. And that was the problem. And then as we started talking, somebody would say, fifty million dollars is the top. No, no, fifty-five. Nowhere did we ever start from the beginning and say, this is everything we need, and this is all that it's gonna cost, and then get together and say, this is what we will, we will pay. So now go back and cut down, and if, you see where I'm going? So, don't ask for a figure, because I don't know what a pool costs. I may say, you can have six. I don't know what six million dollars is, gets you for a pool. I have no idea. Four, three, eight, ten. Let's just throw a number out there. That means nothing, because we don't know what pools cost. And it's all arbitrary. And it's not, and it, because, because quite honestly, three million dollars right now is a lot of money. We just had a big argument about taking a emergency vehicle out of service for a month. We know, we, nobody has to tell anybody in this room about the economic realities that we are facing going forward. We all know it. We're all worried about it, we're all nervous about it. So to be put in a situation to decide on spending money above and beyond the operational budget of this community right now is serious business. So a half a million dollars, frankly, the six hundred twenty-five million dollars, a thousand dollars, is a real stretch to taxpayers right now. And that's just the design of the darn thing. And you're saying it could cost six, could cost ten, we don't know. Having said all that, so let's not talk about putting ceilings on anything, please. Having said that, from the beginning of this whole process, I've gone on record as being in favor of Community Pool. I believe we should have one. We've always had one, and I believe we should continue to have one. I believe it's a, it's a, it's a resource to the town, it's an important amenity in this town, and we should have it. And with, whatever it takes, we should try to continue to have one. And I'm gonna support all the efforts it takes to continue to have one. So I'm in favor of it. Money's gonna be an issue, we know that. I'm a little out of sorts here on the process, where we find ourselves in the process. As you know, I was personally out of service for a little while, from last summer through the fall. Was there a time when I was not here where there was further discussions of potential designs that were going into these bids?
September.
Okay, so I missed September. So that, we talked about what you were putting into this bid?
So we were here, uh, Mike and I and Mr. Gilo made a presentation, went through the whole thing. Um, we were basically asking for permission to, uh, be able to have the ability to, to develop a concept so that we can get off and get going, and that's where it was.
I mean, I read, and I've read my, my, my stuff, but I just wanted, so what, what?
So we made a presentation of this, this, of this concept?
This concept.
Right.
So I know in the past we talked about different concepts. My understanding of this kind of process would be, here's concept A, B, C, D. Let's go out to bid, and then when we get all the numbers, we as a community can decide which one of those we can afford and we wanna do. It sounds to me like right now we have one concept that we're going forward with. That we're gonna put, we're gonna design and put out to bid. Will there be a point where we can look at all of that and make major adjustments if necessary, based on the bidding? In other words, is only one concept gonna go out to bid, based on what these guys design? So we're easily going to say, you know what, because you talked about size. Um, nah, we've gotta go down to nine thousand square feet, we've gotta get rid of this, we have to change this, we have to, what? You know what I'm saying? Is it going to be the type of bid from an eventual contractor that's gonna allow us to decide whether eight, six, five, four, three is doable? Or is it going to be, this concept is gonna be six, yes or no? Just like, just like this bid is six twenty-five, yes or no? Because I thought I was gonna have an opportunity to weigh in on where this bid went. But obviously, because I didn't have this stuff, I didn't realize this is not a request to, for a bid waiver, quote-unquote, type of issue. It's, this has been chosen, take it or leave it. We don't have an option to say, go with option two, three, four. We're accepting the bid award, or we're not, by awarding this bond. So is that what the bid's gonna be like on the final construction?
We're gonna bring you a design of a pool. You know, again, the first one was a, you know, a basic scheme, we called it Scheme D, okay? And this was, was a, you know, a concept. We're gonna come back with a design, and probably knowing what some of those pieces of that design will actually cost. So we come back with a whole number, and we're gonna say, this is the cost. And I think one of the things, Hal, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna try to have some breakouts of these numbers, knowing what each one of these, uh, processes or each one of the facilities might have some type of a number on them, correct?
Part of the, uh, there's a lot of detailed steps in the RFP for the design firms you have there. And part of it is cost estimating at several points of the design. The first major one here is in, uh, in a couple of months. When they finish their schematic design, they're supposed to give us a detailed cost estimate for us to review, to make sure that, you know, we take a look at it, and at that point, obviously, we would share it with, with everyone here and, and see what the, what the flavor of that is. But the other part of that, you know, it's, it's difficult for them to design three different sized pools, but there's all sorts of other things that impact the cost, they're called alternates. You know, you may have run into them before. And what we do within what we typically should do with a design team is develop a number of alternates for different things that could either be added to or taken out of the project, uh, either early on or even after the bids come in. You can do them as bid alternates a year from now. And if the bids, the, the bid environment is favorable and you get low numbers, you may wanna add some of those in, and you already have bid, competitive bid numbers for those alternates. If the numbers come in higher than anticipated, you have deduct alternates that you could also take out of the job without compromising the, the base design. So, uh, you know, there need to be some basic decisions made, uh, early on, but there are a number of ways that you can still have, uh, you know, a, a pretty good degree of flexibility through the process to, to modify the numbers if they don't start heading in the direction that you want them to head.
Well, that's good. Excuse me. So as you said, Mr. Galak, if, uh, if the cost of the overall project as proposed at this point, so to speak, was in the six million dollar range, this number before it today would probably be the cost for the design services of this engineering firm. If however, during the process you've just described, sir, uh, we tapered down to something that was four million dollars, we might anticipate the design services to be in the four hundred thousand dollar range. It's reasonable to expect that that's gonna happen. Okay, which leads me to one thing. Counselor Fishbein used the term design phase, but is, it seems to me that this contract is for the design services from start to finish. Am I, am I misunderstanding something? Am I, am I misunderstanding something?
So there's four parts. There's the preliminary design phase, the end use permitting phase, final design phase and bid phase services, and then construction administration services.
So this, but this bid is for all of that?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure we're all understanding, because I got a little nervous. In other words, I, I look at it as architectural services if we're putting up a building. They're there from start to finish.
This is, the six twenty-five is soup to nuts.
Right. Soup to, oh, good. I like that. I'm hungry. Don't use that term. Um, now I want soup. Uh, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm almost done. I, uh, a couple of things that Mr. Savinelli said that just raised a little red flag. Just, you, you talked a little bit about this firm in ways that almost made them sound like akin to a general contractor or a construction manager. Put my mind to rest that these, this is an engineering firm and every person who's going to be hired to do the work is going to be bid out and is not necessarily associated or a part of their operation. Is that, can you just say that? Yes, out loud? So we have clarified. Okay. I know you said a team and I respect that. I appreciate where you're coming from. But sometimes terminology can get a little, can, can be alarming. Um, and, uh, all right, I, I, I'm, my questions are answered. Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Luterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for coming tonight. Um, I just want to start out with, and hopefully for the future, um, I'm disappointed that we got this this evening, that we didn't get it earlier. Generally, when we get it the night of, we table it or should table it and move it on and then come back so we have a chance to digest the material. So moving forward, um, if there is documentation that, get it to us at least a week ahead of time so we can digest it. Um, that being said, the six twenty-five um, figure. I, I'm trying to, with all the conversation that happened tonight, I'm still grappling with how did they come up with that figure? It, it had to be based on something that you gave them a concept, some kind of concept to, to work from. I mean, how did, how did they arrive?
All the firms had the concept.
Okay, okay. All firms had, they all had the concept. What did you give them for a concept? I mean, was it a thirteen thousand square foot pool in, in a splash pad and, and which, which scenario?
It was, it was scheduled D. It was the
It was scheme D that we presented back in the fall.
Okay.
That presentation with the projected cost estimate at that time that associates with scheme D was the four and a half to six million. So that's what they, that's what they centered their price on.
Okay.
That project.
So using that and so what they're going to do now is they're going to take that, that design scheme and they're going to fine tune it with the engineering work. Not so much the design work, but the engineering on it? Or is it, is it both?
So that was a concept. We're going to be designing the pool. And based on the cost estimate, we're going to look to maybe scale back some of it, but it's going to be a, a team effort with T L B Architecture and this pool committee.
Okay. Because what they have, or who put this schedule together?
That's our committee. That was just there.
Oh, the committee.
A reference and a guide for everyone involved.
Okay. Because, um, there's a, on the preliminary schedule on the back page, um, you know, excavation and prep services, pool construction, eight weeks, um, all of this. Those are really hypothetical because you don't know what you're getting.
Correct. That was just a guide and a template for us to work from so that we can keep all this together.
Okay. And the other thing was, it was mentioned earlier about the, um, um, construction management fee. So how does that play into the six twenty-five? Because you don't know what you're getting. And generally, construction management fees are based on the total number on the project. So if it's a five million dollar project to eight million dollar project, three million to eight million, someplace in there, it, it's, it's not the same fee for three million as it would be for an eight million dollar project.
Yeah, this, this isn't really, uh, within the six twenty-five is not true. Construction management is, I believe you're thinking about first. Uh, I think the premise here would be this, this would be a lump sum general contract bid once the drawings are done. Uh, what this is, is basically construction administration services, clerk of the work type services. And what we did to, in the RFP, so that everybody bid in these, these services, the exact same thing is we gave them a timeframe. So it's time based. Uh, we gave them, I believe it was a nine or 10 month timeframe for construction and told them to assume that there would be a, a three day a week presence on the job site for their, uh, construction administration person. So it's not, it's not percentage or fee based. As you see, sometimes this is time based. And that's something that can also be fine tuned. I, I believe I could let Mike speak to that too. Uh, as we get into this, if we find there's, we don't need quite as much time from them, we could use that also to bring the cost down. So, uh, that portion of the RFP was time based, not cost based.
So, okay, so I just thought more information was coming, but, um, so at the time based instead of a percentage based. Okay. Um, okay, I, I'm just concerned over the six twenty-five, you know, and that's, I'm assuming that's a do not exceed fee because it can go lower, but it's not going to go higher. So this is really a maximum. Um, okay. Thank you. All my questions answered before, but thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Um, I'm actually okay with the information that was supplied here tonight, being supplied here tonight. Um, the second two pages is a preliminary schedule. And if you didn't supply the preliminary schedule, we'd be asking you, when are you going to dig up the pool and things like that? So it helps to kind of have it. And people are always asking like, oh, what's the timeline? And the other page, the first page is really just an explanation with facts of, to help us understand why T L B Architecture won the bid. It was not something that we were doing tonight any different than we choose other vendors that we would choose. Not even to mention the park and rec commission or the pool committee. Already, already, already all going over this. Um, so thank you for all that hard work too. Uh, you guys, I know it's been a lot of meetings. Uh, and you've actually, you've been very strong and actively listening and being open to listening to all the people. Um, whether it's, you know, the people that just kind of bump into you and talk to you or find you on Facebook, uh, write on the Facebook forums or the, the citizen groups that have formed, come to meetings. And I know from them that you've been very accommodating, uh, to keep this whole process open and moving as along as well as it can. Uh, and going along with the discussion earlier, um, and we've talked, um, out of pocket before. Um, the, I will not get into my maxes, my ranges and everything tonight. Um, uh, but going along with what Counselor Chairman Servoni said, and then to kind of jump on also what Counselor Testa had said. Um, and I will say, you know, I, pool, splash pad, parking lot, pool house. And after that, if we need to trim back, I know you're talking about including all the bells and whistles, but I, I'm open to you guys proposing different phases if necessary. I know there was an exercise park area discussed at one point. Maybe we don't develop as deep into the land with the gazebo, the pavilion at one point. Maybe, maybe there's phases like that too. Um, uh, but I do support the community pool, and I think that needs to be the core focus. It's great that it frees up additional land and that we can find other uses and make it an all year round thing. But my support behind you guys is with the community pool part and splash pad part as a higher priority in all of that. And I'll touch base with, with John later, um, with more information on details and numbers and whatever that he can, as always, share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just to dovetail on what Counselor Laffin said. I was a little concerned with the concept that we weren't addressing a parking issue that, uh, I think currently exists. I think when the pool's at capacity, the parking lot is probably exceeding capacity. And it's, it's my hope that if we're scaling back uh, with the size of the pool and, uh, you know, the size of the, the fun parts of the park, that we could gain a couple of parking spaces. It's my two cents.
We have that, we have that original plan to expand the parking lot already, the current scheme. I'm not sure if we downsize, if we would be able to add more than the addition was at nineteen twenty.
Well, the current concept, I think, allows for, uh, twenty-three more new parking spaces. But certainly with the work that's ahead of us the next two months, the net could go a little higher.
It may go higher.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just want to get back to sort of the sixty-four thousand dollar question. Without that cap number, do you feel that you have enough information to give to the design person for them to put together something that we're not wasting our money on?
Yes.
Okay. And is it possible for the design, this group to put together a few different levels based upon expenditure? So we've, we've talked about a, a general number and then, you know, go two notches above that.
Yeah, certainly we can, um, if that's a request, then we'll, uh, we'll get in touch with T L B as soon as possible and take a look and see how, see what their capability is to come up with that so that they can generate the necessary cost estimates and stay within our schedule.
I would think that if, you know, that would be part of the information gathering and then you guys come to us and say, hey, this is what you can get for this amount. And, you know, this is what you could get and we may
Fair enough.
You know, so that might be a good way to go about it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Anything else from the council? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
And the ordinance passes.
Thank you all. Thank you for all of your time and your work on this project.
It's our pleasure.
All right. Up next is to conduct a public hearing to consider and act on an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter twenty of the code of ethics of the town, well, chapter twenty is the code of ethics of the code of the town of Wallingford. The ordinance committee has worked for the past near year to, uh, redraft the, uh, the town's code of ethics. And, um, that is what's before us tonight. It was actually spurred by the charter revision that was passed with the seventeen election. Any questions or comments from the public? Going once, going twice, three times. No questions or comments from the public. I call the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to adopt, uh, or to repeal and replace chapter twenty of the code of ethics with the code of the town of Wallingford that, uh, was brought forward by the ordinance committee?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Morganstein.
I'm just going to throw out one comment as I've looked things and thought things and gone through, um. I am not sure why there was no public, our public has adjourned. Um, there have, over times of talks of ethics, been repeatedly comments, um, insofar as, um, appearance of impropriety. And I, in going through the process of this code of ethics and all the legalese and the, um, state statutes and such, um, raised the question of, um, the appearance of impropriety and was told that that is not a legal term. Um, so I, I just express a bit of frustration, um, that decision on how ethics are done, um, it's a hard thing, you know, a, a perception, an appearance, a, working within a community that has, um, a lot of people and some may be related to each other and do business with each other. And having, over the years, having been a public member, heard comments such as, um, well, how could I not have some involvement with that thing that, that we're a community and we're all involved in different things? Um, I don't find that what we do when we get up here writing rules really addresses some concerns that I've had and the appearance of impropriety. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just wanted, we spent a lot of time on this and, you know, just thank the members of the committee for, um, working together and, uh, certainly dealing with my little idiosyncrasies and trying to squeeze the lemon here. It's not perfect, but it's doable. Um, and I just wanted to make that known for the record. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Next up is a public hearing to consider and act on an ordinance regarding the minimum age for the sale and distribution of tobacco products of the code of the town of Wallingford. Clerk has copies of the ordinance if anybody hasn't seen it yet. Uh, I open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Going once, going twice. No comments from the public. I hereby close the public hearing and I bring it back to the council for discussion. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, before we voted on this, um, I made some comments during the, the ordinance committee hearings. I think this is an admirable thing to do because I don't think anyone should vape or smoke for that matter, you know, because it's awfully, uh, it's terrible for your health regardless of what your age is. However, at the same time, I think that the town really doesn't have a place to, to pass an ordinance to ban something that the state um, hasn't taken out. I think an eighteen year old, while they're a child in many aspects, is an adult in many aspects as well. Uh, they can die for their country and so on and so forth. So I think at that, that's the age at which you can make a decision whether you want to put these kinds of poisons in, in your body. I hope nobody does, but I just don't feel like it's appropriate for this, for us to ban, um, you know, the sale of these products to, to kids between eighteen and twenty-one. Um, you know, the state may take a different aspect on this in the future. I think this is a burden for the police department. I don't think that this is enforceable largely. Um, all the data that we've been given to suggest why, uh, how dangerous vaping is, I agree with all of that. And most of it focuses on high school students for whom it's illegal for them to use this material. Um, except for, you know, certain high school seniors. So, um, I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but I respectfully decline.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Marone. Can we have a motion, please?
Move we approve the ordinance regarding the minimum age for sale and distribution of tobacco products of the code of the town of Wallingford as proposed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so yeah, so I think if, if you're, if you're watching from home, we've had a lot of discussions on this off camera at our ordinance committee meetings, which are not televised. So, uh, this is not some kind of knee jerk reaction to anything. This is something that, uh, came up in October and we've, I think we've covered it on almost every ordinance meeting, almost once a month since October. So just wanted to, you know, put that out there for our dedicated viewers. Um, I, I think a couple of points on, on this. Number one, the idea of, you know, our litmus test for a law is how enforceable it is. I have, I see all sorts of laws that are very, very hard to enforce, but we still have them. There's laws against speeding. Um, I will tell you, I see cars speeding by my house on Grove Street. laws against speeding. I will tell you, I see cars speeding by my house on Grove Street and Casella Drive every day, and no one's proposing that we rid ourselves of those laws. I think that laws are designed to at least make some positive impact. We know that no law is gonna be 100% effective. There'll always be violations, but I don't think any law is 100% ineffective all the time. I certainly don't think this would be 100% ineffective. So I don't think that's a barrier for me to vote against it. The second issue is the police. The police, there are two departments in town that have, that would be impacted by this, the Health Department and the Police Department, and they have not only told us at our meetings that there is no issue with them enforcing this, but they've encouraged us to pass this. So that is, that weighs very heavily in favor of, for me at least, to vote for it. If the police objected to it, I would, I would pause and, but certainly we had Chief Wright here at one of our ordinance committee meetings and we've, we've had Mr. Civitelli here at several, Mr. Turner, and there has not been really any indication from the town that this would be a burden on the town, that I've heard. The other point that keeps coming up in the articles in the paper, this eight, this notion of, well, they're 18, they can die for their country, it's missing the point that these are in the middle schools and the high schools, and that's what that is trying to address. It's not targeting, meant to target 18, 21-year-olds solely. It's meant to try and target older siblings who might be buying it for their siblings who are 15 or 16 or 14. And if you read the information, especially from the FDA chief, Scott Gottlieb, you read about this epidemic, that it's in the middle schools, in the high schools, and that's what that 18, 20, 21-year-old age is targeting. That's the point. So is it gonna 100% succeed? No, it's not, and I'm not naive enough to think so. But can it help a little bit? I think it can, and I, I think that I would rather do something than do nothing, and I would rather at least try to change the status quo than just leave things alone in, in the face of all this data that we're seeing. So I, for those reasons, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to Counselor Chertel, I'm looking at the findings of fact and purpose, and I don't see in the findings of fact where we're finding a fact that possession of tobacco products end up in the hands of minors. I don't see that that's part of what's on the floor. I mean, I could be correct, Janice. Is it in here?
Well, it starts with paragraph five.
Okay. Electronic smoking, well, that's not, that's electronic smoking device used by minor.
Electronic, among minors.
Recently tripled.
Recently tripled? Or does that not contradict what you just said?
Electronic smoking device use among minors has recently tripled. There's nowhere in here that it says possession by those 18 to 21 leads to possession by minors. That's, that's what I said, and that, this doesn't say.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood you.
Sure, but that's what I said. So certainly, that's not a finding that we're making. We're, I guess we're finding through paragraph five that minors are maybe purchasing them illegally and we can't enforce the current law. Maybe that's what we're saying, but I'm trying to figure out what is the intent here? What do we, what is the intent of purpose? Because I just heard something that isn't in this document.
Well, but it was discussed by the council in the ordinance committee meetings. You don't have to say everything, I mean, you first argued that we shouldn't have findings of fact in the ordinance at all, and now they're not, not everything is in there. We've, we did most certainly discuss the fact that if I am 15 years old, I may in fact know an 18-year-old. And so if an 18-year-old can get it, they can pass it on to someone who's 15, 16, or 17 years old. They have a, they're more likely to have a relationship with someone in that same age group. So that's, we did have that discussion.
Well, I distinctly remember I talked about why was it 21 and not 25 and all of that, and the discussion that we actually had was that the statistics show that if you start smoking prior to 21, that more than likely you're going to be addicted for a long period of time, that after 21, that the chances of that happening were lessened. It was nothing about possession of minors. It was, that was why we selected 21.
We talked about both. I don't.
Okay, but so then why 21? Where is the fact that shows that a 22-year-old doesn't?
The fact that you just cited. You just cited the facts, that if you don't start smoking by the age of 21, the, the evidence is that you in fact are not likely to do it. That's a good thing, right? So if we help prevent you from smoking up to the age of 21, we may have helped you never smoke for the rest of your life. That's, that's a good thing.
And that is generally what the findings of fact say. So if that's what the findings of fact, so is that what we're saying? Because that's the document.
That's one of the things that those things say, yes.
Okay, so, so the minor issue, a minor getting possession of tobacco products, the question is, why is it 21 and not 22? Where is the fact, where is the evidence that shows that 21 is directly related to the minor?
I just, I just said that. If that's not enough for you, then I.
To the minor?
You'd have to ask some, no, that if you, if you prevent someone up to the age of 21 from starting to smoke, the chances are they will not. That's not a, I don't understand. Why is that not?
We're talking about two different things.
Okay.
We're talking about being addicted to nicotine and smoking is one thing.
Yeah.
And possession of a product that is currently illegal for one to possess is another thing. Those are the two.
They both have nicotine.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm looking at a document that's titled Findings of Fact and Purpose.
Right.
And what it has to do with is the addicting thing, not, not necessarily minors or that one who possesses 18 to 21 is more apt to give it to a minor. It merely deals with 18 to 21 and their actual consumption of the product, right? Because nowhere in there does it say that, you know, a thousand minors or a thousand 19-year-olds in the past year had been arrested for giving stuff to minors. It doesn't say anything like that, or 20-year-olds or 21-year-olds, right? So I have to, I have to assume that the sole reason for this, based upon what's before us, is to try and stop people who are between the ages of 18 to 21 from purchasing and therefore consuming and getting addicted to nicotine products, right?
I'm not, I'm not making the assumption that you're, I mean, you're limiting the, the whole discussion that we, excuse me, had over a period of time. You know, paragraph nine talks about the fact that according to the Institute of Medicine, it's their belief that if you raise the minimum age to 21, you'll have a, excuse me, reduce, that would, that in fact will reduce the introduction of smoking to adolescents aged 15 to 17 by 25%. And they project at that time that 4.2 million young people would be protected from premature death as a result of starting to smoke, and we can all help to prevent that by raising the age to 21. So this, this whole discussion that we've had over, I don't know how many months we've discussed this, you know, we did a great deal of talking. We did not put every single fact that we talked about in our statement of findings and purpose. We have a record by, you know, when you do an ordinance, you have a record of the considerations that you have. I mean, on the ethics ordinance, we have over a year of discussions on a variety of topics and modifications, and that's what we did with the tobacco ordinance. You had testimony from the health director, the police chief, head of youth and social services, you had a researcher from Yale. I've, both I and others have submitted to you written materials, articles regarding the subject matter. So what you pick and choose to, to accept as being a rationale for this, that's, that's within your purview. That's your, that's your job. But I think that this finding of facts and purpose is a broad outline of the concerns that we have. I don't know that we ever intended to make sure that every single fact that we thought should be in here is in here. Certainly, the council, in its wisdom, could have added, deleted, and I thought at one point you advocated that, why are we doing this at all in terms of findings of facts and purposes? So, you know, if you wanted to add something, you can add something to this, but I think that overall it covers all of, most of our discussions over the course of the past several months.
Okay. So, and you and I had a discussion earlier tonight.
Yeah.
That I don't think that legally we can do this.
That's correct.
And under the, the concept of preemption.
Yeah.
Because the state has determined that it is lawful to sell these products to those 18 to 21. And there is no authority. The state, the state has never said, towns, you have the ability to change that.
They do not have to state that affirmatively for us to be able to exercise our authority in the same subject matter as the state.
Okay.
When we first started this discussion, I'm not even sure who introduced the, the topic of this ordinance, my first reaction was whether or not there was a preemption issue. I did research it. I did read the Town of Orange case. I do not agree with you that that case establishes that there's state law preemption. Am I guaranteeing you that we have the authority to be in regulating in this area? I can't guarantee that to you because there had been no specific case on that. And someone could seek to challenge this if they, if they so desired on a preemption argument. I took the position, and I believe I reported it to you very early on in our discussions, that I do not believe preemption bars us from this ordinance. I was concerned about the Hartford ordinance, which went all, went into a licensing process on a local level, when all of these, these retailers are in fact licensed by the state. I thought that was treading into an area I did not think we should tread legally and, of course, from a practical standpoint. But I did review the preemption argument, so I think you and I are gonna have to agree to disagree on that.
Yeah, so the Orange case, so Connecticut Supreme Court.
Right, yeah.
Basically, 2001, the state passed a stat, state statute that said you had to keep cigarette vending machines away from minors. And then it also said, but the municipality can do whatever it felt was best, you know, take whatever additional efforts to keep cigarettes out of the hands of minors. And they passed an ordinance just banning the vending machines. And somebody challenged. And at the trial court level, the court said, yeah, you're right. And throughout the local ordinance, the Supreme Court said that.
That the town could do it.
Well, the town could do it, but it particularly said, first of all, it's important to note that this case does not involve the total prohibition of the sale of cigarettes. So here, in this case, we are banning the total prohibition of sale to those 18 to 21.
Which is not the prohibition of the sale of cigarettes.
Well.
It's, I would interpret that to be a regulation, not a prohibition. We'll have to agree to disagree on that, too.
I don't, I mean.
By telling, by making a regulation of, of, you know, who qualifies to buy something or not, I don't think that's, that's an outright prohibition. I don't think that's what the Supreme Court was talking about. I think that this is a local regulation of the sale of the product.
It goes on to say, indeed, the availability of tobacco products in the, in the town to people who are legally permitted to purchase them remains unabated. Here, in this ordinance, we would prohibit a 19-year-old from purchasing the product. So it would be abated in direct violation with that language. It also goes on to state that nothing in this section shall be construed as limiting a town or municipality from opposing more restrictive conditions on the use of vending machines for the sale of cigarettes. The municipality shall be responsible for the enforcement of such conditions. That was the actual language that was in the vending machine statute. There is no such language here. Therefore, more than likely, it is preempted, in, in my opinion. So, you know, and especially you've got the state talking about it at the same time. So you, you can't, I mean, we just went down this road on firearms this week and it was a very, and that's, that's what brought it to my attention. You know, that the towns are trying to do stuff like this and it's a no-go. So, you know, I don't think we have the ability to do this. I've been against it anyway because we're dealing with adults and, you know, a character of a free society is being able to make mistakes, and I don't know that it's inappropriate for us to get involved here, but I, I really think, you know, was it 7-148 is the statute that gives us the empowerment, what we can do as a municipality. It's not in there. And 53-344 is the statute that deals with the sale and delivery of tobacco to minors. And that would be the statute that's akin to the vending machine statute in the Orange case. And I've looked at it and it doesn't say that we have that power.
But the preemption, and, you know, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree, but the pre, an issue over whether or not there's preemption doesn't begin and end with whether the statute specifically states it. You still look at the body of the law to see whether or not they meant to preempt it without actually saying so or not. So it's, you know, you do have, in the Orange case, you had a very specific statute, but that does not end the inquiry as to whether or not preemption is applicable in any other circumstance. You have to look at the whole body of law, which I did, and I did not believe, I don't believe that the statute provides, that it's preempted.
The Supreme Court said whether a conflict exists depends on whether the ordinance permits or licenses that which the statute forbids or prohibits that which the statute authorizes. So presently, the state statute authorizes a 19-year-old to purchase a tobacco product. Our ordinance would prohibit that, and therefore, that's a conflict, and therefore it's preempted, in my opinion. So I understand, it isn't the first time we've disagreed.
It isn't, it isn't. It probably won't be the last, but, you know, and I do think it's, you know, my work, when Hartford first passed theirs, I kinda was waiting to see if, you know, those, because I do believe that the industry attempted to persuade them not to do it. And I did see, look to see, and I don't believe they made a preemption argument, that I could tell.
They haven't.
I'm sorry?
They haven't sued you.
They didn't sue and they didn't, and I don't, I don't recall seeing that in their objection to it. Not that it's, it can't be made, but it's, it's, no doubt, someone can make the preemption argument and a court would decide it. So, you know, whether the state steps in and does something about it, I don't have any faith, so.
And I just, I just want to note that in the Orange case, the state was a party. So Blumenthal got involved. Anyway, thank.
Well, let the state sue us. Good for them.
Counselor Testa.
I'll be honest, I've, right up to recently, I had a problem with doing this for many of the reasons that have probably been stated before, from just a simple matter of stepping into the rights of 18-year-olds when there are so many contradicting laws regarding 18 to 21-year-old, as it is regarding military, liquor, all those other things. And I was really loath to, to go ahead and pass a restriction like this out of respect for that type of, those sensibilities. But I, I teach and coach at high school, so I spend a lot of time with these, with kids at that age, and they talk to me whenever I want to know. So I just talk to them all the time. They talk honestly with me. And recently, I had 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds flabbergasted, literally flabbergasted at what 12-year-olds are doing. That was it. The 12 and 13-year-olds at, at the middle schools and lower, what they're doing, and this is just part of it. You, good thing you're sitting down if I told you what else they're doing regarding substances and such. It blew my mind and I'm, I'm not naive to what's going on out there. And that, that really got me thinking. And they know what's going on, whose brother or sister is going out and buying the vape cartridges and charging them extra 40 bucks as a vig, and so on and so on and so on. I know all the arguments. Well, they can just go to North Haven and do it. They can just do this and do it. So from a practicality standpoint, are we really gonna have an impact on a lot of this? Probably not. Probably not. Somebody really wants it, just gonna drive to the next town and buy their cigarettes, buy their vape cartridges. Possibly, we could be preventing or making it a lot more difficult for the 12 and 13-year-olds to get a hold of these things right now. to get a hold of these things right now. The real demons in this whole argument are the manufacturers of these who are putting cotton candy flavor into nicotine delivery devices. They should be in jail. At best, they should be in jail. And I'm pretty much a libertarian about a lot of things, surprise, but those people are evil because they know damn well who's sucking on these vape cartridges. They're getting 12, 13, 14-year-old children addicted to nicotine. I quit smoking four years ago on 59, it took me a long time. There's nothing harder to get, to get away from than nicotine. It's hard enough when you're 17, 18, 19, 20. When you're 14, we don't even know what's going to happen, but those kids are, I was going to say screwed, so I might as well say it. I don't know how they're going to get off these things. I don't know how they're going to break a nicotine addiction at 15. I know 16, 17, 18-year-olds and kids that have graduated because they stick around where I live, they're all on the Jules. They're all on them, and I'm fighting with them to stop it. And none of them were cigarette smokers, they just loved the flavor of the cherry. But now they're hooked on nicotine. They've got to deal with it, but we can't even begin to imagine what it's doing to 12-year-olds. There's no worse, as far as I'm concerned, there's no worse issue right now than this. Can we stop it? No. So what are we really doing with this law? If nothing else, and that's the only reason I'm voting for it, if nothing else, we are sending a message. We are saying as the town of Wallingford to all the other communities and the state, we feel it's strong enough to do something about it. So everyone else, jump on board, because a lot more has to be done. We're not going to stop anything to any great degree, but maybe we'll join the cities that have made these, passed these ordinances and let everyone else out there know that it's that big of a problem. And then maybe the people that can really pass laws that bite, that take a real bite out of this and start penalizing the real, the people that are responsible for this, will realize that it's time to do it. And that's how all important social movements have started. So let's do this on a matter of principle, not as a matter of practicality. Thank you.
Thank you. To add to what you, what Counselor Testa just said, the youth getting into tobacco products, getting addicted, what concerned me the most of the evidence that was presented to us or the information that we received during the ordinance committee process, is the permanent negative impact on the brain's ability to make dopamine, which is the chemical in your brain that you naturally produce that makes you feel happy, or makes you feel good. If you, at such a young age, have damaged your ability to naturally feel happy, you are doomed to a life of chasing feeling good. And if we, as a town, can make a statement by this ordinance that says, we want to protect our youth to the extent that we are able, to prevent, you know, a life of seeking alternative happiness, to me, that is a risk worth taking if there is any risk associated with, with passing this ordinance. I was in college in Fairfield County, and I remember back, however long ago that was, that a neighboring town, I believe it was Wilton back then, was a dry town. And I think there was another town in Litchfield County called Bridgewater, which was also a dry town. And that means that alcohol sales were illegal. Bridgewater was the last town to stop being a dry town. In 2014, it repealed its anti-alcohol ordinance. If, if liquor prohibition lasted into this decade without Supreme Court challenge, which is, it's a state-regulated substance, then I'm, I'm shocked that that wasn't challenged at some point, point at some high court. So I'm less concerned about the legal challenges to this ordinance than any other consequence it may have. With that, I believe Counselor Fishpine had more.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I didn't research whether or not the legislature gave the town the ability to perhaps pass its own regulations involving alcohol, I know that in that one Supreme Court case, that was the one distinguishing factor, so. But to, you know, to Counselor Testa's comments, you know, when we started this process, I thought that we were just dealing with vaping. And, you know, I used to smoke three packs of cigarettes a day, and I know it took me a long time to quit. And, you know, I liked menthol the best because it smelled, you know, it tasted like mint. Who wants to smoke that stuff that doesn't taste like funny flavors? You know, so if this was legal from my perspective, I think I'd be open to the vaping thing. It just appears to me like we've just gone over the edge on the whole thing. Because, you know, the Juul products are already illegal for the children to purchase at least, and I believe, yes, to possess, I saw that as well. You know, so that's happening already. I just think it's an overreach, especially with just, just generally doing the tobacco products, so. You know, I just want to make that known for the record, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sorry. Okay, Fishpine.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
No.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, we will open a public hearing, I'm sorry, on to item nine. We'll conduct a public hearing to consider an act on an ordinance regarding the board and commission training requirements of the code of Wallingford. A brief summary is that we've, this ordinance is intended to impose upon those appointed to boards and commissions the obligation to undergo Freedom of Information Act compliance training. And with that, I will open the public hearing. With the resounding silence in the room, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion. If we could have a motion on this ordinance, please.
So moved.
Any debate on the council-concerned discussion? Counselor Testa.
Is this a one and done? Or is this every year, every two years, every five years?
He wasn't here for the.
Every five years? We can do it on video?
Yeah, once initially. This is for appointed. No, it doesn't. Oh, we don't have to be ethical? You don't have to do it.
All right, I think I've heard all the comment the council has. And just, just for the TV audience, sorry.
Just, I don't think you want to look like you're just absenting yourself.
No.
From a very worthwhile training. However, and one distinguishing feature is that the town attorney's office is generally represented at all of the meetings here, not necessarily true. In fact, for most other boards and commission, that isn't the case. So you have legal help and presence here to steer through the troubled waters at times of Freedom of Information, but I just don't think it has to appear like you don't care.
That we're taking it lightly, no.
Let me, please, just go on record, I apologize if my flippancy seemed, I was just joking around a little bit, I fully expected it to apply to all of us, and I think it is extremely worthwhile, I apologize for that.
By recent standards, this is a long meeting, and so I can understand why you might be a little punchy. Counselor Laffin.
And I want to add too, for, again, similar to the other issues this was discussed over a long period of time in ordinance committee meetings, but that we cannot compel ourselves because of charter, that we can't disqualify ourselves from serving because we didn't attend the training, the nature of our election is what it is. So that's why we're not included by the ordinance, but, you know, we are free to watch the videos.
Counselor Chertel, sorry, I know we're trying, I know you want to have the meeting ended, I just, yeah, again, as Vice Chair Laffin said, this is another thing that we've been kicking around in ordinance for several months, and this was something that a resident proposed, and we said, let's think about it. So I think that just by virtue of that, it was public comment, it was a suggestion to the council, we talked about it, it's like any, it's like the last one, it's not perfect ordinance, but I think that it, it's better to have this in place than to have nothing at all. So I think it's a good thing. There being nothing else, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, there you go. Fishpine.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Testa. Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
And we finally all agree on something. Then we are on to item 11, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
We need to be more specific than that.
Mr. Chairman, if we go into executive session pursuant to section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to a claim in the matter of the town of Wallingford versus Sig Sawyer Incorporated.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. With that, I declare the council in executive session, please kindly clear the council Call the meeting back to order, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved, second.
On to, I declare the council back in public session. On to item 12, can we have a motion regarding item 12?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a settlement of a claim in the matter of town of Wallingford versus Sig Sawyer Incorporated as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.